Okay, it's seven to seven, time to call this meeting to order, please, everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to do some such prayer, please.
Sure.
Dear God, please grant us wisdom and guidance for tonight's meeting, assist us in making the correct decisions for Nelsonville. We ask in, we ask for this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Ma'am Caldwell.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Jones here, Mr. Dumpy?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Dumpy, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add board notices, twenty-six, twenty-two, seven, twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-two, twenty-nine, twenty-two, and thirty-two.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones, yeah, Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last round of the meeting? Is there any council discussion on this matter? Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Jones, yeah. Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Okay. Uh, we have the treasurer's report in front of us, Sappington.
Yeah. Good evening, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. This is the treasurer's court, report for February two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the treasurer typically works on Monday evenings, uh, just as a reminder. So, uh, I don't mind giving this report form, and you'll see on the first page, balance of four point four two three million between the two accounts, that's much larger, um, than January for sure, and I believe that's because at the end of February, I don't know if it was completely a million, it was like nine hundred seventy thousand dollars came in for the sewer plant project, which we wrote out for the project about a week later. So, uh, just an explanation there. The second page is the record of investments, you'll see two hundred forty-nine dollars, forty-four cents for our interest on the year, which will continue to stay that way, although the Fed indicated two weeks ago that they'll raise rates six times this year, and a few of the board members, um, voted for eight times. So that would mean rates between two and two and a half percent, which, um, would be a significant increase in our interest amount, so we may have that to look forward to. Although I don't get too excited, it's probably enough by inflation rates, so. Everything's about balance, right? On the third page is the bank reconciliation of the sweep account that the treasurer has committed. And, uh, it just goes through the expenses, checks cleared, um, EFTs, and then on the other side, he's got, uh, what's been posted to the books, and finds no difference, uh, which is what's usual, so.
The Fleet Corps mastercard, is that gasoline?
Fleet Corps, yes, the mastercard, or... Yes, that is, yes. Fleet Corps mastercard, I guess I didn't realize Fleet Corps was mastercard, um, but that's our fuel accounts. I was gonna say the other's the credit card, but that's Visa, so sorry, just threw me for a loop there. Any other questions? No. Okay, that's the treasurer's report over on this screen, and, um, again, auditor's report for February two thousand twenty-two. Don't know what's going on here with the size, can I just a second? Technical difficulties.
Just a side note.
Oh, it's at four hundred percent, that's why.
Just a side note, we realized at our small business that we had a Fleet Corps card, and they charge you a annual fee to use the Fleet Corps card, especially at Speedway. So, it's just something that you might pay attention to, because they slip it in there.
They charge a big fee if you use it at a non-contract.
Yes.
So that was a big problem, uh, when TSAP, when myself first got here, especially in PD, they would just go wherever they wanted, and, uh...
Every single time, it cost us twenty-nine ninety-nine.
Because they won't go to crossroads, so we had written all these complaints, because Chief Johnson refused to follow that direction, so we'd put it in writing.
Yep, it was one of the first issues.
They were still trying to use an ADP.
That was secure, they, they knocked that off, check that off.
And just, just to clarify, you'll see the, you'll see the PD, uh, and everybody refueling, not everybody, but those who have those cards refueling at Speedway, because they don't charge us that, right, it's bad there. Uh, it was one of the first issues I worked on, the previous city manager didn't, uh, find it a priority, um, Scott did, and so we fixed it pretty quick, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that, yeah, twenty-nine dollars every time you fuel up, crazy.
Yeah, we're not, we don't love Fleet Corps, but it does, it is nice for them to have cards available with them, um...
Oh, I get that, I do, I just, I just, we just realized what they were doing to us, and it was like, oh my gosh, it's two hundred and thirty-nine dollars a year for the fee.
One of the other moves we've made, so all the utilities crew, we stopped using them altogether in utilities, and Jason buys all the fuel there bulk. So we've changed over, so all the non-highway use for, uh, diesels, off-road diesel, anything else which we get.
We have one car left, one car, I believe, that's if, if we gotta, somebody's gotta go somewhere, like down the road where they might need it on the way back or something.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, that voice from the darkness, that is Jason Cohen, our...
But we save money buying in bulk as well, so. We have three, we're actually, uh, there's an auction Wednesday that we are participating in as well, to hopefully get a bigger tank, because right now we have a three hundred and a five hundred, and, uh, we need a compliant one with a catch-all. Am I saying that correctly, it's not a catch-all, but...
Yeah, suppose you have to ask, uh, spill containment.
Spill containment, that's it, so. We're, uh, we're trying to get compliant, and, uh, also a bigger tank to hold more, especially with the way fuel prices are jumping all over the place, because right now we're buying fuel about every other week, is that about right? Guys, every three weeks we're buying fuel?
Uh, no, about every six. It's not every six, not every month and a half.
Okay. Either way, we're trying to get compliant, and, but we do save a lot of money buying in bulk like that.
All right. Sorry to interrupt. No, 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 you're good. Um, so, uh, Nelsonville Auditor's Report, February twenty twenty-two. So I've got the financial summary up here for everybody, this is also on the website, for anybody at home, cityofnelsonville.com, and for council in your inboxes. Uh, revenues for February one point three five six, expenses one point four one two, um... Whoops. So you'll see that we, uh, spent just, uh, a little bit more, we brought in in February, pretty typical for January, for, actually the whole first four or five months for us to spend more than we bring in, uh, because most of the city's largest bills and contracts, um, are invoiced at the beginning of the year. Uh, let's see, I just take here again, these are large numbers for a single month here, that's because of the sewer plant project almost exclusively. Here's some of our fund balances, we had two point eight seven nine total, um, general fund five hundred fifty-two, combined streets almost three hundred, let me see if I can't make this better. There we are, capital just under a hundred, but awaiting a hundred and fifty-three thousand from AEP, is that the right number, Scott? Capital improvements, AP reimbursement is a hundred, one, one hundred fifty thousand, um, water fund eight hundred eleven, sewer fund just under half a million. And I just say here again, fund balances are generally lower, pretty much all of them, um, than they were in December, uh, because of debt payments, large bills, et cetera. So... Well, I might have to scroll in for you guys now. Maybe that's why Scott had a four hundred. Here is our cash report for everybody. Um, on the left-hand side, you'll see the funds, the numbers, this is also in everybody's inbox, if you guys want to study it closer. Um, but in general, you'll see higher balances on the left side. Uh, this breakdown between revenue and expenses for the year, the expenses are generally higher, and most of our fund balances lower as of February twenty-eighth. Coming down from three point five five nine million, one hundred eighty-seven eighteen cents down to two million eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-nine and seventy-nine cents. Um, and there, actually, you can see the large wastewater treatment plant project, uh, check encumbered that I mentioned earlier. So we were just about to write it. And almost finishing here. I wanted to put on council's radar, it's on Scott's radar, we worked on this issue last week, the state legislature has changed rules on local income tax refunds and withholdings. We mentioned this a year ago, but we hadn't seen the practical impacts until this tax season, so senators and representatives in Columbus made it easier for people to request refunds from tax year two thousand twenty-one, and for employers to stop withholding for those employees in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, for most cities and villages and, and anyone who levies an income tax, that feels like getting us coming and going. Um, impacts difficult to predict, um, thus far, the city has seen a notable increase in the size and number of tax refunds, and we're not done, we have more than last year right now, and we're not anywhere close to done with tax season, we're about to enter the busiest time, um... And further, the more concerning part is some employers, large and small, are toying with adjusting their withholding down for employees, um, who once worked in the city, but who may now partially work in the city and partially work at home. And then just some things about the general fund, we definitely have downward pressure, last year we had a lot of upward pressure and free, what do we want to call it, free money? Nice funding sources coming from the feds and state, we use cash, we don't have that, and then this income tax thing is really screwing with the city of Athens, we'll find out in two weeks how bad it is for us, whether this is a ten thousand dollar problem or a hundred thousand dollar problem, we don't really know, but we've been having meetings, uh, with some local employers to try and give the city the best shot, um, with some of them, and to have our concerns heard, and we'll go from there. The last thing I'll say is that, uh, it's not really my project, but it came to my office today, the first draft of the code came today, so we're in a edit period, to make sure the code, uh, update is done correctly, and then we'll look for a final draft, so. All said. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, so looking at the rental registration fees, it looks like we've only brought in, um, about half of like what we're budgeted.
Um...
Is there, like...
You're talking the revenue report, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, the revenue report.
So, that may be the case, um, as far as, I just don't have it in front of me. It's not too atypical, because there's a lot of folks who pay in December as well.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't know if it's half, so I'm not sure.
Well, I'm looking at it at forty-eight point four seven percent, um, budgeted amount.
Okay. Uh, I'm actually curious to pull up, let me see, let me like go to November.
And I noticed, and, and Becky mentioned that, uh, I think it was at the last committee, one of the last committee meetings, that rentals were actually down in the city.
Yeah, that's why I was just wondering, like, if, like, how we do follow-up for people who maybe have registered in the past and haven't registered to date, like, do we do any kind of follow-up?
Oh, yeah, she sends them many, many inquiries.
Um, yeah, and the, the fine gets steep, really steep, right, it's a hundred, and then it goes up to like...
A lot.
After like so many days or something?
Yeah, yeah, every thirty days, I think it goes up by another hundred.
We'd have to pull a report, and I always do know exactly where they're at, because that's the true track of what they were reporting versus who's paid now.
I know that we, Justin, you were at that meeting, I think, too, weren't you, because didn't we, must have been a least supplier, because I thought she mentioned that we were under a thousand rentals now.
Nine seventy-five.
Yeah.
Nine seventy-five, yeah. Judiciary.
Judiciary, okay, super, and it was, do you report like twelve hundred?
Um, the other question I was gonna ask is, like, a year ago, when we were first on, like, we were, we were seeing, like, credit card statements, and like having to approve credit card statements, like, do we not have to do that anymore?
Um, good question, uh, we can, we can get one to you for sure, yeah.
No, I don't know, I just don't, I thought that that's something like, because for some reason you were doing it last year, and you had to do that, and that, but I noticed that we haven't had those lately.
No, I can def, we can definitely get those started, yeah.
If you don't need to do it, I was just curious.
No, 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 it's a good practice, and it's done. So I was trying to pull up December here, um, it ended last in December with twenty-four thousand collected, which was eighty-two and a half percent of expectation. So, I guess, like I said, there's, there's a significant portion in December, it was like fifty-four hundred, but that's definitely not half.
Right.
I don't know if that helps give context.
Yeah.
It's not reaching the original thirty thousand, uh, that I remember the goal was when we first passed it. A little bit, I think.
And how do you feel like the lodging tax, um, collection is going, have you had to implement or enforce any of the, um, like enforcement mechanisms that we put into that?
Great question, so lodging taxes is, uh, doing quite well, um, I'm gonna pull up the most recent report. Uh, we have sent all of the material, so I estimated we might bring in fifteen thousand in lodging tax, last year we brought in less than that, and, uh, we already have forty percent of it, so we're gonna come in far above, um, hopefully twenty, twenty-five, thirty. We sent all the material, all the language, you know, council's vote and everything, we corresponded with a lot of folks, I have personally, because I do this myself, and I have a few stragglers, the straggler list is about half what it was when council passed the new legislation, um... Stragglers is a play word, this is folks that I'm chasing down, um, they've received my stuff and phone calls, they're just, I don't know, we're, we're just figuring it out at the moment.
Okay.
But we have not levied any kind of civil action, I haven't asked the attorney, uh, to escalate to that level, um... But I do have a tracking system, and we're keeping track of when they're missing these reports, so.
It's, I think we said like quarterly, and so we, we'll be coming up on the end of the
Yes.
first quarter of this year, so I'm just thinking like, you know, maybe that went into effect.
Yeah, so...
About halfway through the year last year, that maybe we need to...
We began the escalation process, at least with, uh, how we're notifying them and how serious they are, um, to bring in the, some of the civil penalties, my thinking was that it needed to be a, a, enough of a sum to be worth the city's effort to, uh, begin, I didn't want, in other words, I didn't want a civil penalty for a two hundred dollar late filing, if that makes sense, um, and I'd rather be as, you know, if these folks are gonna stay outside of compliance for long enough, we're just gonna go after them as a bunch when they, when the money's owed, and it's a significant sum, and so, I have not pulled all the levers, all that ordinance, um, but it has worked, so it's a, it's a stronger. And, and it's been really nice that, I have an approach to lodging tax, as a like, here, council gave me all this teeth, so you guys better get them out, that's not my approach, that's never been my approach my entire life. I've actually used it as like, this is a really good opportunity for us to get to know each other, and I want to know, what do you need, and also, this is what we need, and this is what the money is set aside for, so I would say, I've only had one person, in fact, I think, and I think Scott knows who I'm talking about, only one person even knew that the lodging tax was set aside for economic development funds, and was not just to general salaries and whatever else at City Hall, and everybody else really liked that, um, and really liked learning that, so to me, it's been a nice opportunity to make that connection and say, hey, the city's not just chasing you guys down, we want an economic development program, and that's what, um, council, myself, and the city manager are looking to build.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Do you have any citizens' comment, okay, our motion to approve the auditor and treasurer's report. Second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have a mayor's court report, because we haven't had mayor's court again, so it's the same as that. Um, when it's mayor's court, it's the first Tuesday of the month, everyone out there, um, please show up for court, and just like to remind you that we are issuing arrest warrants for failure to appear. There's several.
Second Tuesday. It's like second Tuesday.
Correct, April twelfth.
April twelfth, so please show up, because there will be a warrant out for you. All right, um... Any citizens' comments, do we have anything? Keyboard commandos, okay, uh, let's go on to business and work as a national comments, easy for me to say. Anything?
Nope.
Okay, committee discussions? Do you want to, on the dog park, as I said?
Sure, absolutely.
So I sat through the first dog park committee meeting, they met, um, five or six, I don't remember exactly how many were there, um, they will be meeting a few, again, uh, meeting with you, or at your next, uh, Parks and Rec committee meeting to discuss, uh, a couple of different ideas that they want to run past you guys, but, uh, so far, they are, um, takeaways, they would like to possibly have the school, um, vote, throw out some names and have the school maybe pick, vote and pick the name of the dog park, and, um, for the end of the year, and then also start fundraising. Okay, sounds good. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, look forward to hearing about that next Parks and Rec meeting, um... Anyone else?
Yeah, street committee met, and, um, there's legislation about the road salt contract for tonight.
Okay.
That was it.
All right, thank you, great, anyone else?
Planning and Development will be meeting next Tuesday, April fifth, at seven PM.
Any hot topics?
Hot topics will include, um, establishing a DORA, a designated outdoor refreshment area, building code, and potential changes to reg, uh, rental registration fees that would include short-term, like vacation-type rentals, but maybe sweeping that into the same registration process that we already have for rentals, so we don't make it cumbersome for city employees to track and whatnot.
Okay, all right, anyone else?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, we, uh, had a finance meeting as well, and, uh, we have some legislation, uh, also on, uh, today's agenda, uh, for some appropriations, um... We've got, we've got some grant funds that are coming in, uh, that we're gonna use in an account that we have set up for grant funds to pass through, um, so we can get one of our playground, uh, pieces of playground equipment moving, um... Also, we have some increases in salaries, too, that are coming through on this finance as well.
Okay.
What else did we talk about, I know we talked about the salt contract as well, and increasing the, uh, part-time firefighters', uh, pay rate as well.
Okay. Great, well, we had to call a Parks and Rec meeting, would you like to get a heads up on what's gonna be needed at the pool, whenever you guys get a chance to...
We're gonna talk about that, we're start, we're starting Wednesday, we're gonna be done Wednesday, we got the new camera to, uh, run all the drains, try to find the leak, getting the, the new canopies, we're gonna start all that with the filters and the new canopies.
Okay. They were in order, our development, okay, all right, anyone else?
So, I had a request, Mr. President, from the green team leader, who wanted to know if they could become a formal committee, and to remind people that there are other committees out there still needing positions.
Who's the green team?
Uh, I think it's Mrs. Shaffer, and the board, like, should run a tree commission.
Oh, the tree commission, yes, okay, absolutely.
I know they're coordinating some, like, a cleanup, um, they need volunteers.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, there were, yeah, the bike path, I know there's one of them, they wanna get an organ, organ, so, so cleanup on the bike path, because I guess there's some trash and foot climbers and what got down there, being hopping and...
Where you've been hanging out.
I guess.
Okay, no problem with that whatsoever, uh, get their information to it, get, get their information they have and what they need done, and we'll get it out to the public.
I have a question, Mr. President, regarding, um, the dog park, um, uh, meeting that we had, uh, did they discuss, uh, cleanup of dog poo with, at the future parks, have they talked about, like, how we're gonna handle situations like that?
Um, right now, they're just working on the very basics as far as getting fencing, uh, well... That's what community services want. No, they're, they haven't got down to the rules yet, um, luckily, we got one person on the committee who is certified in all of that stuff, from grooming, clear down, to taking care of it, and has experience doing it in the past, but, uh, the biggest thing is we need a name for it, so we can start the grant writing, um, as far as the rules for the dog park go, I mean, that's gonna come, and how that'll take place as far as cleaning up up here dog and such, um, that was also one of the rules that they want to talk about as well, as far as, you know, do we want to, uh, do they want to charge a membership for this to help keep it cleaner, that's something that they've seen other places, um, you know, I don't wanna get too far ahead of the committee talking to you guys, but, uh, as far as that nitty-gritty, no, right now, they're more focused on getting a name so they can start the fundraising aspect of it. The, um, part of my brief, um, the sewer plant has been bumped because of electrical parts shortage to May of twenty-three now, or twenty, where we at, twenty-two, May of twenty-three, so you might as well say summer of twenty-three, it was supposed to be done this year, so we are a little over a year out now, just for electrical parts, so it's not gonna be a fast process.
I appreciate that, the update on that, and that brings me to the broader issue of dog poo, uh, which we have, uh, we've been getting some complaints, uh, from folks in town about, uh, people not picking up after their dogs, uh, while they're out walking, uh, it happens to me a lot, I have one of the bigger yards in the neighborhood, so pretty much everyone comes to my yard, it, it's not as huge a deal for me, I don't really complain about it, because I don't, I don't walk in usually where they're at, so, um, but we do have issues, I guess, in other parts of town where it is an issue, people aren't cleaning up after their, their animals, um, and I guess in some instances even it's occurring on sidewalks and, and, uh, so I, I would just ask that people...
Columbus tree gets a lot of it, you know.
I, I would just ask that people be respectful, um, of other people's property, um, and, uh, and, and clean up after your dogs, it's no different than your kids, you know, you should pick up and take after your kids, you know, you take, just, dogs are the same way, animals are the same way, you need to take care of them, and, and, uh, take responsibility for them, so, I just, thanks for the poo conversation, I appreciate it, just wanted to mention.
Yeah, totally missed the softball on that one.
You look really good in your glasses, compared to...
Thank you, they're for safety, in case anybody throws anything at me.
Cool poo.
Sadly, it's a problem at the Ford Street Cemetery also, sadly.
Which is, no dog allowed.
Yeah.
And sadly.
Those signs aren't, those signs aren't up for suggestion.
Yes, there is, so, so you know, I think...
Touching people, right?
Your yard, probably because the looters attract them.
It's the bike, it's, it's a problem on the bike path.
Yeah. I don't know about that.
You know.
Pilot field used to be really bad, but the cameras have helped. So, okay, so the message is, clean your poo up, please, please, people. Poo people.
All right. Anyone else, anything else? Okay, uh, department updates, who do we have up tonight?
It would have been Scott, but he's at the chief's.
So, okay.
I don't have a whole lot, we, we've just been in.
That's really not surprising.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you're ahead around here.
All right.
Well, we're transitioning from, from the cold months and getting into the warmer stuff, just tying up things, and we did get the water main down on Front Street, we got a new water main man, had all the services there, so hopefully that'll cut down on all the, all the leaks up there, we have, seems like every other weekend. We got the hydrant replaced at, at Florida Village, they got hit by the car, that's all taken care of, we had a valve fitting down there. We have used probably twenty-six ton coal patch, I quit buying it because a week from today, um, they start making hot patch. I noticed a couple holes just this evening on Canal Street, and on the East Street, they're starting to come back, we'll get those taken care of next week, soon as hot patch comes in, and like I mentioned a minute ago, we got the new camera for the drains, we're gonna be at the pool Wednesday and start trying to get everything prepped at the pool and ready to go for summer.
Your new machine, did that part ever show up?
It isn't.
Didn't you have a problem with that new machine that you bought for the hot patch last year?
Oh, yeah, it's fixed. It's fixed because we was actually using it with coal patch.
Okay.
And it works very well when you use a coal patch. Very, very well. Makes it a lot easier to handle and get. In the holes and act.
Speaking of holes, are you gonna tell everybody about the hole that's in their water meter?
In the lids?
Yes.
We've talked about fifteen times.
I know, it never hurts.
That's where the readers were at. All the lids are getting replaced with plastic lids. They pulled the readers out, so when our, our guys are out reading meters, they know that that's a new meter. And they don't try to pull a lid if it's not reading well. So, they are in the process of being replaced. We got an email the other day, I believe we're at about seventy percent. On meters being changed out. So, we're chugging along.
Uh, Scott, or I'm sorry, Jason, yeah, I'm sorry. So, there was a sewer line replacement on Chestnut Street. I think it was a, maybe a private, not the city. But it's like a muddy mess over there. Is there any way that the street sweeper could?
The street sweeper can, um, right now, the street sweeper's down. It's got a flat tire.
Okay.
I ordered one. They, they went down Friday. We had it out of lot in the last three weeks. Uh, something got jammed in between the rear build tires and popped one of the tires. They told me it was gonna be midweek before the tire got here, so it's down until probably Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay.
But as soon as this back up, yeah, I'll be done with it.
Okay, yeah, just where they put that in, it's just like, the whole street's just caked in mud.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really rough street to try to dig a sewer in because it's so deep.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was fascinating to watch. Uh, that's all I'll say.
As soon as this fix.
Chestnut Street.
Yeah.
I, I never thought much about it. That's why I didn't tell you about flat tire because it's been out so much in the last three weeks. Did, uh, I figured if it was down for a couple days.
Yeah, I think they put in a couple meters and so there was some. Dirt from that as well and then they dug up the street and it just, yeah.
Yeah, they moved meters out because they, did they get yours?
Yeah, they sure did.
Yep. All, all the inside meters should be outside now. The residential inside meters should all be outside now.
Wow.
How's the flashing light at Chestnut Borough going? Any issue?
I've heard no complaints from them.
Well, the only, I noticed myself actually. I was turning left, getting out of People's Bank, went, turned left, go towards the school. And like four cars pulled up at a stoplight to get on Canal Street. I was going to turn left. You could see the cars coming the other direction. Of course, it's yellow coming on Borough. I just wonder if maybe. Is it because the pole was a blind spot? No, because the cars were a blind spot. So the car's sitting there in traffic.
Hmm.
Um, so I wonder if maybe I might think about before we stop rather than. Just, oh, I saw that.
The four-way stop, assuming it wouldn't hold it up much longer.
Yeah. I, I went to pull out and it's like, you know, I can't really tell if anybody's coming the other direction at all. Of course, it's yellow the other way.
I would say the same thing. Coming, um, Chestnut. Like, you know, like we're at Y's and you come up. I don't know, like northwest.
Heading west.
Heading west.
This way.
Chestnut, um, when you stop there, um. It says, there's like a bush. It's like a blind spot. You can't really see, looking left up Mason City Hill. Like you can't see that direction at all. You really have to kind of inch out into the street to be able to, to look.
Go right.
Yeah, so.
One of the things uptown that was a suggestion that we're gonna take as well, especially with the Opera House. Is we're gonna get the actual stop bar with the letters on the street. Uh, because a lot of folks were having a hard time seeing the stop sign so far off to the right. So that'll help there, but we'll take a look down there and see what we can do down there for, as well, see what we can do to make it better.
Yeah, also, and, and one other thing, since we're talking about streets real quick. The hospital, where the people that are up at the old hospital where they stop.
Yeah, that's a mess.
They don't understand that the people coming up the hill don't stop. And I've about created three of them.
So we need a little sign that says cross-traffic does not stop.
Something underneath stop sign.
We, we may, we may have some of those factors.
Yeah, part of the problem there is.
Where that stop sign.
So the stop sign is here and then there's that other road that comes out and it's stopping there. So they stop here and then they come down. But there's a good distance of road and then, you know, the hill's coming up with no stop sign. And I think that they think, well, I stopped.
At the end of the parking lot.
At the end of the parking lot, like I don't have to stop again, but they, they do need to yield the upcoming traffic.
Naturally. Spike strip, take care of it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Naturally, a four-way stop would go there, but I don't know how that would be received. It'd be rough in the winter.
It'd be rough in the winter on that hill.
You can't, you can't make it up in the summer.
Yeah.
I would advocate for fire trucks to not stop going in.
Turn on your lights.
I bet your tractor's going out.
I'm worried about hoes.
Falling out.
No, I get you. Talk about hoses.
Yeah. Um, no, we need to put those stop, those, the cross-traffic does not stop.
Yes.
I'll check.
Cause they just, they just, when they stop at the end of the parking lot, they just go. And we have some, there's some people that have lived up there a while and they just actually assume that someone's gonna stop because everyone has always stopped.
I think they're supposed to.
Cause they're supposed to.
And.
Uh, Mr. Cohen, um, have you, did you have a chance to go meet with that, uh, the lady? And her name was at the last council meeting?
We talked to her.
We talked to her.
Okay, talked to her on the phone. Were you able to go over to her place and look at her situation yet? On the pay yet street?
So we got her in direct contact with Rex. And we talked through the situation with her. We got a better understanding of what was going on. It definitely is backing up from the storm sewer. And it was backing into her drain, so, um, we didn't actually go over and look at it. Once we talked to her on the phone. And got, she explained to us exactly what was going on and, uh, and we got her connected with Rex, so. She was gonna call us back if she had any issues and we haven't heard back from her since then.
Okay, perfect. I just wanna make sure she was. And then one, and one last thing, and that's kind of one session. Do we get the keys changed on the council clerks?
Not.
No, no, not hers, just the door.
We, we did the outside door.
Okay.
So hers, hers is still the same, but you gotta go get in.
Good enough. Good deal.
Okay.
No.
I got some, you have it out.
You're good.
If you haven't already got one, I got one in my office.
Okay, great job. All right, um, let's move on to second readings. Second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-two.
An ordinance setting rate for the two electric charging stations installed by the city.
Okay, any council discussion in this matter? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes, Mr. Dunphy?
Yes. Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two on the second reading?
An ordinance amending and clarifying ordinance ninety-three dash twenty-one. Regarding the sewer rates for every one thousand gallons over the minimum fifteen hundred use.
Any council discussion on this matter? Okay, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Sorry. Ooh, look at that. Nope, great, great video on that one. Quick.
Um, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes, Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, now we're getting to it. All right, ordinance. Ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll do it. Thank you, sir.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two appropriations ordinance. To appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following. The sum of six thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance. Line item number one zero zero dash three zero zero dash one zero zero one zero salaries and wages. The sum of six thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance to line item number. Seven zero zero dash three zero zero dash one zero zero one zero salaries and wages. The sum of six thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance to line item. Seven five zero dash three zero zero dash one zero zero one zero salaries and wages. The sum of twenty-three thousand dollars in the unappropriated balance. To line item number five zero zero dash five five zero dash five five zero one two grant projects. The sum of three thousand eighty-eight dollars from the unappropriated balance. To line item number one zero zero dash two zero zero dash four zero zero one zero fire operating supplies. And declaring an emergency. Whereas appropriations need amended to appropriate money from the unappropriated balance. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The two thousand twenty-two appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance. To the following funds. The sum of six thousand dollars from unappropriated balance of the general fund number one hundred. To line item number one zero zero dash three zero zero dash one zero zero one zero salaries and wages. The sum of six thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the water fund number seven hundred. To line item number seven zero zero dash three zero zero dash one zero zero one zero salaries and wages. The sum of six thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the sewer fund number seven fifty. To line item number seven five zero dash three zero zero dash one zero zero one zero salaries and wages. The sum of twenty-three thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the grant fund. Number five hundred to line item. Five zero zero dash, I'm, five five zero dash five five zero one two grant projects. The sum of three thousand eighty-eight dollars in the unappropriated balance of the general fund. Number one hundred. To line item number one zero zero dash two zero zero dash four zero zero one zero fire operating supplies. The total appropriations are increased by set amounts. The total appro, the total unappropriated balance is decreased by set amount. The total appropriation in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by set amounts. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article Four, Section four point zero nine. Through four point one one as an emergency. But in the operation of the city government as necessary for the immediate. Preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals or welfare. Fair of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force in effect upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-eighth day of March, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any, any council discussion on this matter?
Uh, yeah. So, like, is, for the salary and wages, is that because of pay raises or what's, what's the need to? Increase those appropriations at this time?
Yep, the, so, uh, the first three, one hundred, seven hundred, seven fifty. That three hundred number in the middle is the city manager's lines. So that's to account for the, the pay change, yeah.
I'm sorry, just say what?
It's to account for the pay change, yeah.
The pay change? And is that just for, is that for the whole year or for the? Quarter or?
What's the year? Yeah, yeah, that should cover the year.
Okay. I was trying to figure out like why, um, like when we pass these, like why it has to be like an emergency under suspension of the rules when we do this? Like, is it emergent?
Cause it makes it immediately. The, uh.
Point D is the emergency.
The D, the?
Yeah, that's.
Twenty-three thousand, the grand one?
The nature works.
Okay.
Any more council discussion?
And that's because of the grant deadline, right? Yes, that's just to get the, um, playground equipment here by July in order.
Taylor asked the question if we wanted separate ordinances and efficiency. I suggested not, but, um.
Anyone else? Motion to suspend?
So moved.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes, Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes, Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes. All right, uh, we're moving on to ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll do it. Thank you.
An ordinance approving change order two for water system improvement meters contract. And authorizing city managers Scott Frank to sign and execute said contract change order and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into the contract water systems improvement meter. Whereas several items of the contract need adjusted in order to complete the contract. Whereas field conditions require additional pit radios for full system functionality. Whereas due to material shortages and delayed shipping times, additional pit radios cannot be obtained. Timely resulting in Ferguson agreeing to provide new meter set for the price of the radio. Price increase of ninety-eight dollars each that the city will pay for the thirty-five dollar. Increase in labor to install each new meters set instead of radio online. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by eleven thousand six hundred ninety dollars. And is summarized as attached in exhibit one. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves change order two for the water system. Improvement meter contract as described in exhibit one. The contract price will be increased by a sum of eleven thousand six hundred ninety dollars. You should say city manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter into accept and or authorize the contract change order. For water system improvement meters contract as shown in exhibit one. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article Four. Sections four point zero nine through four point one one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary. For the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals or welfare, welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force in effect upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-eighth day of March, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, so this is why, what's the, what's the price increase for their, okay, I get it that the stuff is delayed.
So, I'll just break it down really simple. They can't get the antennas. Originally, they were supposed to leave about four hundred of the old meters in place. Which are not bad, they're newer meters and they were just gonna put antennas on them. However, they can't get the antennas. So what they're gonna do is just replace them with new meters and they're not gonna charge us for the new meters. They're just gonna charge us what they were gonna charge us for the antennas. Which is about a three hundred dollar savings. So with that said, they're gonna eat that cost. All they want us to do is to eat the cost of the additional installation. So which is what, ten bucks or twenty bucks extra, they said?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five extra to install the new ones. So when this is all said and done, we're gonna get one hundred percent complete new meters in the entire city. Okay, so.
How much are those meters, the ones they're giving us for free? It's a hundred. Ninety-eight dollars each more, the price increase on per, per, per meter. So. How many more meters are we getting? Is that like?
Four hundred. But how, what is it? Are they four hundred total for the meters?
I don't know that much. Between two and two fifty.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, we're getting some more.
How close are we getting, having this project done?
We're seventy. We're about seventy percent.
And then, uh.
They only got a few weekends.
So like that was one question, I'm sorry. Um, so like they, they gave me my new meter, but they said somebody from the city would be coming to take the old meter out in my basement?
No, no, we're, we're still figuring that out. I haven't, I haven't had the phone conversation with them yet.
Okay.
Jason's too nice to him on the phone, but they're gonna take it out.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, uh, uh, they might pay somebody else to do it, like Rex, and that's fine, but we are not taking it out.
Okay.
Um, the other piece of that too is, so we had extra money and it hasn't, I don't remember if it's come through in change order, if it's coming through, it kind of all wears together. But we had extra money in this grant as well and we are also replacing every single commercial meter in the city. So we are gonna have one hundred percent brand-new meters across the board. So if you guys remember the legislation we did last year. That, uh, says that, uh, commercial meters have to be inspected every three years. Everybody's gonna start out fresh, so three years from now. All the commercial, uh, businesses will have to have theirs inspected. So they're not gonna have any burden put on them right now and, uh. Shouldn't cost them very much the first three years. Right now, a lot of them, it would cost them a fortune to have that put on them right now. For example, the hospital up on the hill. They're paying minimum bill right now. Um, there's no way they're using minimum bill water. The jail, you know, we just changed theirs out for them as well. That was a four-inch meter. I don't remember how much the four-inch meters were, but they're pretty pricey and, uh, so.
But that's because their meters are basically bad?
Right, so, but the commercial meters are the, uh, businesses' responsibilities. They're not a city responsibility, but because we had room. a city responsibility, but because we had room in the grant, um, I wanted to go ahead and do a one-time swap-out for them, and now we're gonna hold them to the legislation you all passed as far as maintaining them. So, so let's say somebody's not ready for a meter yet, and they're gonna be upgrading the water line coming in probably to a bigger water line, from like a one-inch to a six-inch, because they're gonna put sprinklers in. I'm not sure if we accounted for that on, I'm not sure what we counted for. I'd have to double-check, or Jason'd have to double-check.
Did you just drop a meter off to that person, give us all later, or?
I'm not sh- I don't know if we accounted for that or not. So Jason would have to look at the list.
You talk about eagles, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, just try to be in common, you know, thank you. Well, but everybody's been worked on it.
About as transparent as that.
That's about the only thing they've been worked on in.
Like a bright cloud, transparency.
I, I'll make some calls tomorrow and find it.
Yeah, I, I won't be late, but I do know I'm gonna upgrade that.
Yeah, it's certainly, it's always... I'll make some calls tomorrow.
All right.
I, you say it's a six-inch? I think so, yeah, six inches is what the jail has.
Oh, was it six?
Because I'm at the, I'm in the volume of sprinklers. So...
Yeah, that's the same one.
Yeah.
You go get them, Mr. Checkers.
And I'll talk a little bit more about that during my report as well.
Uh, quick question, Mr. President, or, uh, Mr. City Manager, they're doing, or, um, the question was brought up, are, um, uh, are rentals considered commercial?
No, anything over one inch is commercial.
I'll put it on the line.
Yes. So one inch below is residential?
Okay. All right, uh, motion to suspend?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Jones? Yes. Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Okay.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Yes.
All right. Starting the fun stuff. Ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please?
I would choose that.
Or thank you, Mr. President.
An ordinance authorizing use of ATVs on city streets. Whereas the city of Nelsonville desires to make Nelsonville an ATV-friendly community. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. That the city of Nelsonville authorizes the use of ATVs on city streets in accordance with the following regulations. ATVs that meet all the following requirements will be allowed to operate on all city streets. Nonlicensed ATVs permitted to be on selected roadways from sunrise to sundown seven days per week unless a special event is organized with the city approval, and hours can be extended. All traffic laws apply, vehicles must be insured, ridden by licensed drivers eighteen and older. All other Ohio laws will apply. ATVs will be allowed to operate on city streets of Nelsonville beginning April fifteenth each year. The last date ATVs will be allowed to operate on city streets is December fifteenth each year. In addition to the below rules, ATVs must be equipped with one rearview mirror. If vehicle is not equipped with turn signals, ATV operators must use hand signals per O R C four five one one point four zero. Vehicles must be equipped with a working rear brake light. ATV exhaust noise must meet the decibel level set forth in four five one nine point two zero. Vehicles must be equipped with a working horn. Vehicles must not create excessive mud and dirt on city streets. This ordinance will be in effect until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Per O R C four five one nine point two zero equipment rules, these regulations would apply and be enforced by the Nelsonville Police Department. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance shall be in full force in effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. Do you only enact it by council on second reading the eleventh day of April two thousand twenty-two?
Okay. All right.
I know we don't typically discuss, but like, we're saying all city streets now, and not select city streets?
Correct. Yes.
If they're licensed and, oh, need all the required, just, I'm, we're licensed once, where I've done, doesn't mean it's streets.
No.
Well, okay. Nonlicensed ATVs permitted on selected roadways.
There you go.
It's, that's, yeah, that needs to be cleaned up. But it's supposed to not be on selected roadway, it's supposed to be on all roads.
Well, it says...
So, I mean, like, yeah, so like, regular ATV, like, the ones that are, like, licensed from the city, right, then you have a license plate on them, but those can go anywhere all the time?
Yeah.
Right, but the ones that people come in and, and they're not, don't have that, don't, you know, they, they're still gonna be, John L. Evans, right canal, World Boulevard.
No, it's all the city streets.
That's not what this says.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't support that.
Well, you don't have to.
I, I'm just having a conversation, Justin, you don't have to get defensive.
It seems all like you're getting offensive, so.
I know, that's why I'm asking the question.
No, I, I was, that's why I was clarifying, because it was, seemed a little confusing to me.
Yeah, obviously, there's language that used to be correct.
Yeah, I agree. We, we discussed it, uh, having it on, uh, you know, all streets. Um, we, we don't feel that there's gonna be, we have not had any issues, we, we, we anticipate that there's going to be a potential issue in the future, there always is, right? But I think our, uh, police officers have done a, a nice job of handling any situations they've had so far. We haven't had anybody out there, though, that's, uh, been reckless or careless, uh, at this point. So, we used the dates that we, we, uh, were with, uh, trying to match up with Wayne National Forest when their trail were gonna be open. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think it's, uh, I think it's only proven to be able to open up the, the city, you know, for everyone to, you know, utilize their ATVs, so, whether they're here or visiting.
Okay, well, the language, that's what you want, the language has to be corrected. Yeah, go back at first reading.
We'll have to amend it, let's amend that, and then, um, a motion to, uh, correct the, uh, verbiage in the, in the ordinance, so, something right back and start over.
Yep.
Have to correct it.
Sorry, right, right back here. Okay.
What do you want it to say? You want to say just get rid of non-licensed, but just...
All, all ATVs.
All ATVs?
Yes.
Okay. Selected roadway parks.
Okay. Our ATVs, we're in second. The ordinance... Twenty-nine twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please?
Uh, I'll introduce it.
An ordinance amending ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two to backdate the police chief's raise to January first, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville gave the police chief a raise on, in ordinance twenty-four twenty-two, whereas the intent of the ordinance was to make it effective dating back to January first, two thousand twenty-two. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The Nelsonville police chief's raise contained and authorized in ordinance twenty-four point back twenty-two shall be amended as follows. The police chief's raise shall be backdated and made effective as of January first, two thousand twenty-two. City auditor shall take all steps necessary to complete and effectuate this pay increase. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article Four, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force in effect upon its adoption. Do you only enact it by council? Oh, I need to do it on first reading. First reading the twenty-eighth day of March, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, so, I understand, I'll, I'll go first. I, I understand that, um, there's been, um, there's been some people talking about this on the, on the airwaves and stuff, and I probably shouldn't even give it any credit. Um, you know, cut and dry, um, the police force has changed two-hundred-and-ten percent. Um, not beating a dead dog, uh, that comes with leadership, and, um, you know, it has nothing to do with charging the kids fifteen dollars at baseball. It has to do with productivity and the streets being cleaned up. That's, it, and it's been, it's, if you've been here for more than three years in this town, you'll notice the difference, and that comes from leadership in the police department. So, any more council discussion on it?
Yeah, so like, I, I agree, and I supported giving chief the raise, but there was never any discussion about making it effective back to January first when we did that, the first time. So I don't understand why we're saying we're gonna backdate it two and a half months, three months. Um, this was not part of a, a contract, um, or some type of promise that we made to him at the end of the year that we were gonna put into effect in January. It came up, we did it to retain him because he was threatening to leave. So I just, I don't understand that the point of backdating, um, the raise.
Well, that's what, um, it came up, um, that was in the discussion that was with him at that time.
I never heard that.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear that either.
Okay, vote no for it, that's fine.
Well, that's fine, but I think this is another conversation, right, that there's conversations happening that are not inclusive of everybody on council, and, you know, that might have changed my vote from the get-go.
Um, just, uh, also for clarification sake regarding, uh, charging kids for, uh, baseball, um, I have not been involved with baseball league now for probably, I don't know, five, six years, but, uh, we were charging, uh, for kids to play baseball, um, back then, just, uh, and so we, and we had been doing it for a couple of years before I, um, moved out of that. So, just to let everybody know, it's probably been close to ten years we've been charging for kids to play baseball and softball.
Okay. All right, well, um, motion to suspend. So moved. Second.
Um, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? No. Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. Let me go to second reading.
I don't know, because it's, it'll be on...
What type of changes for the second reading?
Okay. Let's do second, two, three.
All right, and Dan is on the releases, he's already notifying people to be responsible for cleaning up the pathways. Okay, ordinance thirty dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
And ordinance increasing part-time firefighters' pay to ten dollars and fifty cents per hour, effective immediately and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville desires to increase part-time firefighter's pay to ten dollars and fifty cents per hour, effective immediately. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Part-time firefighters' pay shall be increased to ten dollars and fifty cents per hour, effective immediately. City auditor shall take all steps necessary to complete and effectuate this pay increase. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article Four, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force in effect upon its adoption. Do you only enact it by council on second reading?
Just wanted to bring your two. Under emergency, though.
Yeah, it's under emergency.
On first reading on the twenty-eighth day of March, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, any council discussion on this matter?
Is this for, is this retroactive, January first?
No, it's today.
And they gave out their wanting a step?
Correct.
Increase, so this is just ten fifty flat until the next contract annulation?
Well, yeah, and then there'll be the two percent raise at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a quick question? It's the, is there anything, it's, it's a two-part, I need to know the first part to know the second one. Is this the only thing in the M O U that this addresses?
No. The M O U addressed the contract change for the chance position as well.
That was already passed.
That was already, oh, that's been passed on ordinance already.
I was just wondering, I'm, just to avoid a, um, a potential conflict in next year's audit, could it just be put in the, um, either the minutes or in council's understanding that the M O U is what's addressing the pay raise, which is what this addresses? They just don't, it doesn't specifically mention that it's, we're amending the contract in here, it's just setting a new pay rate? I, I'm just trying to tie the two documents together.
You need to amend this, to add a line that says this is reflective in a, in a...
I don't think so.
M O U to the contract?
I don't know if you necessarily need that in the ordinance itself versus...
You can just attach a copy of the M O U and sort it and sign.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that, like, we don't, a year from now, they say, well, you've got this, and you've got this, but you should have actually tied them together, if that makes sense. Um, I don't think you need to amend it. I'm not the attorney, but I was just, I think if it's included in minutes, everyone understands.
I agree, I think Drake makes a good point, just attach a copy of the M O U. Yeah, and I'm just gonna clarify that, we had discussed this, you know, uh, in police and fire, and in, uh, findings, we were just waiting to hear back from, uh, the union just to determine that they weren't there with the, accepting the contract, so. Uh, and if that's it, then I'll, uh, motion to suspend this, President.
Okay, second time.
Um, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Uh, motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Yes. Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. All right, resolution twenty-two seventy. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
A resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, hereinafter referred to as the political subdivision, hereby submits this written agreement to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation annual road salt bid in accordance with Ohio Revised Code five five one three point zero one B, and hereby agrees to all of the following terms and conditions in its participation of the ODOT road salt contract. The political subdivision hereby agrees to be bound by all terms and conditions established by ODOT in the road salt contract, and acknowledges that upon, that upon award of the contract by the director of ODOT, it shall be bound by all such terms and conditions included in the contract. And the political subdivision hereby acknowledges that upon the director of ODOT signing of the road salt contract, it shall be effectively, it shall effectively form a contract between the awarded, awarded salt supplier and the political subdivision. And the political subdivision agrees to be solely responsible for resolving all claims or disputes arising out of its participation in the ODOT road salt contract, and agrees to hold the Department of Transportation harmless for any claims, actions, expenses, or other damages arising out of the political subdivision's participation in the road salt contract. Whereas the political subdivision's electronic order for sodium chloride on road salt will be the amount of the political subdivision agrees to purchase from its awarded salt supplier at the delivered bid price per ton directed by, awarded by the director of ODOT. And the political subdivision hereby agrees to purchase a minimum of ninety percent of its electric, electronically submitted salt quantities from its awarded salt supplier during the contract effective period, and the political subdivision hereby agrees to place orders with and directly pay the awarded salt supplier on a net thirty basis for all road salt it receives from the ODOT salt contract. For all road salt it receives from the ODOT salt contract. And the political subdivision acknowledges. That should it wish to rescind this participation agreement, it will do so by written emailed request no later than Friday, April night, twenty ninth. Five-five P M. The written email request to rescind this participation agreement. Must be received by the ODOT Office of Contract Sales. Purchasing section email. By the deadline. The department upon receipt will respond that it has received the request. And that it has effectively removed the political subdivision's participation request. Furthermore, it is the sole responsibility of the political subdivision to ensure ODOT. Has received this participation agreement as well as the receipt of any request to rescind this participation agreement. The department shall not be held responsible or liable. For, for failure to receive a political subdivision. Participation agreement and/or a political subdivision's request. To rescind its participation in the agreement. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville Athens County, Ohio. That this participation agreement for the ODOT. Road salt contract is hereby approved, funding has been authorized. And the political subdivision agrees to the above terms and conditions regarding participation. On the ODOT, ODOT salt contract. Truly enacted by council twenty-eighth day of March two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion on this matter?
No, I think Scott, you said that, um. Like, we didn't know this was an option?
I didn't know it was an option, no. Um, it's not nothing new, it's just something I didn't know. It's not anything new, sorry.
We. So this is like the state ODOT, or this is like the county, like the county in the near?
State.
It's the state.
So it's the state and everybody, or when I say everybody, other cities and the county roll up underneath of it, so when I inherited. It's funny, so if y'all remember the little red truck with the plow on it on my desk with salt on the back of it. When I inherited this, uh, job, that we were under a contract with, uh. What's the name of Compass Minerals? And, um. We signed up for five hundred tons of salt, which we cannot physically store five hundred tons of salt. And, uh, nor could we afford it, because it would have cost us sixty-four thousand dollars at the time, and we only budgeted thirty. So. With that said, that's what we had, we worked through that problem, we had to pay some fees and get out of that contract. And then the following year, we only needed just a little bit of salt. And then this year, we actually used the full thirty thousand, um. That's when we were calling around and we found out that this existed. But they wouldn't let us jump on it because we didn't belong to it. And then we had to go through Compass Minerals. Where we were at before, which they gave us the same price without being in the contract with them as they did the contract price. But that's where we found this one was some bucks a ton cheaper delivered.
How many? In a. Bad winter or good winter, no good winter, um, how many tons do we go through?
So about three forty-ish.
Okay.
So we should, uh.
I'm not fully stored.
I can get three forty in there. Plus, uh, there's usually probably another hundred in there, so we can probably, if it was completely empty, we could put four hundred in there. Four, four fifty to most. So this, it won't change the amount of money, we usually budget thirty thousand a year, so it won't change that amount. And, uh, we don't need any more this year unless something crazy happens, so I've already spent the thirty thousand for twenty-two. So that won't change, again, unless something crazy happens toward the end of the year. But for next year, um, if we budget the same amount, thirty thousand dollars, I'll be able to purchase that. January, February timeframe, which will replenish. What we normally use and, uh, we'll just get more salt for the same amount of money.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, motion to adopt. So move. Second.
Did you, did you do what this?
No, it's a resolution.
Resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution, okay, sorry.
Your Cory and Cory and. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, yes. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
All right, city managers report.
Scott? Great, good evening, everyone. First thing is, um, we sold the, uh, trailer that was given to us. By the owner down on Backstreet, so we did silent bid, I have two silent bids here that was all us turned in. So I have no idea who won, they were given to us Friday, so we'll see.
We had no minimum?
Uh, two fifty minimum. Which will cover the taxes, uh, owed for the year, plus the doc fees, so. Uh, this one is Mr. Danny Sims bid five hundred dollars. And they know they have to move.
Yeah, and it can't be put anywhere else in town.
Correct. And Mr. Stuart Coska is the winner, eight-ten. So Stuart Coska gets the trailer for eight hundred and ten dollars. Yeah, they got thirty days, they'll probably get a little bit more time just because I'm having some struggles with the title, how the auditor's office is taking care of it, then it'll take me another week to get the title ready, but after the title's ready, they get thirty days to get it out of there. So. Uh, code interviews, we got one more interview tomorrow. We had a lot of candidates and we had really good interviews, um, today. We had two last week, had two and got another one tomorrow. All of them have been really good, so it's extremely competitive. Um, having a report and, uh. You know, I just wanna echo what T-SAP said last time, there is plenty of people that wanna work. And the competition has been solid. The, uh, just, I think I already mentioned it, Chief Fitch is at London doing his chief school. National Water Service, they're the ones that cleaned well two for us last year and actually got it working again and. Which once was determined as unserviceable, they're coming tomorrow. To, uh, they've already tested well one and well three, which both need, um, heavy maintenance. So we are gonna determine which one to do first, well one or well three. They're also going to, uh. Start quoting us, if you guys recall, we canceled the service contract. So Jeff is going to build out a twenty-year maintenance plan. When the next painting will be due, and we're gonna get current prices as of now. When will the next inside cleaning be due, when will the next painting be due? And we're gonna do it based off today's prices, and of course, it'll be up to us to maintain it, but for budgeting purposes. When the next painting's gonna be due, when the next inside cleaning's gonna be due. And we. We're gonna have to keep that on the radar since we're not paying the thirty thousand dollars a year now.
Yeah, it was once like twenty-one, but I think it was raised to twenty-nine.
Yeah, twenty-nine sounds right. So since we don't have, since we're not paying that out now every year, we're gonna have to keep that on the radar, um. Coming up, so I doubt it happens as well, I mean. All of you will be through another election before we have a big expense, but, uh, it will be coming up. Hockey River Main, so we opened the bids on Friday. So I do know that we've had several companies come in and bid on it, so. I do look forward to having several bids to open and, uh. With the way the. Spawning goes and everything else, it'll probably be late July, early August, when they actually put the, uh. Uh, waterline under the river. Sewer phase three, that's the two point seven million, which adds, uh, sewer and railroad street over toward, uh. Off of, uh, Trash Pile Road back in there and then. Uh, updates a couple of lift stations, that's back out now, this is the third time it's been put out for bid, it's been broken up into. Three different, uh, bidding options, so smaller companies can bid on it. Uh, with that being said, there's also another bigger company that missed out on a bid in Athens who can also bid on it now as well. So hopefully, um. Week after next is when we open for that one.
It's set up to where it can be bid on three smaller ones of one as a whole.
So, a lot of things have changed from the first two openings where we should be successful this time, so.
Will that complete, um. All outstanding areas in the city that are not currently connected to sewer?
No. We still have, uh. Those crazy booths up the Riverside Drive that don't have.
Oh, okay.
All the way up the hill there and then, uh. That there's only a few left.
Your neighbors don't have one.
Can those? Can that area of town like pass into? The prison or the jail line or how would we?
No, it comes over the hill.
Over here.
Yeah, it comes.
So it's one of those that, uh. For phase four, I will provide all of you, because we're a ways out from that. But we will provide you with all the rest of the city and then also proposals. To expand out, so if you recall, we had, uh, proposals in there to go out towards scenic lane. That was an option. And, uh, of course, Donville got, they, they completely, um, heist on that and.
Didn't we talk six ninety-one?
Six ninety-one. And then there was a couple other versions, but we'll, we're in all that to, uh, you guys when it's. Gets close again, but the next proposal will have everything in the city that's not included now on it. Uh, let's see. Water loss, so I wanna talk water loss. Um, and a measurable metric, I think that, uh, council should be measuring of us. And there's two different types of water loss, there's water loss that we're losing into the ground and then there's water loss built. So. We were at fifty-eight percent roughly, water loss that we were losing into the ground, so that's the little red jug sitting around here somewhere. That, uh. And for every gallon of water we produced, you know. Roughly, let's just say sixty percent of that was going into the ground. And, uh, not even making it to the customer, well, now we're down to forty percent of that. So now, because we found that big eight-inch break, we got a company coming into town the end of, uh, April first of May. They're gonna come in and find as many leaks as they can, they'll drill on top of it. Between that and the amount of water lines that we replaced, I'm hoping to get down. Industry standard's fifteen percent, if we can get down to fifteen percent as old as our infrastructure still is. That'll be a miracle, but it still should be our goal and, uh. We should push forward to that. The other piece of that is what's an acceptable range of water build for with the water loss? So being that, um. The, everything is now metered, those should be within a certain percentage of one another, right? Right now, it's, uh, another sixty percent off of water build for from the water loss and that's. Completely understandable right now because it's, uh, it's a mess right now with meters going in, I mean, for example, the hospital, you know, it's charging the minimum bill. And, um. Other places, they're running minimum bills as well and, you know, there's still water leaks happening. So those are two different metrics that, uh. I would suggest you guys hold us accountable to and, uh, try and set measurables for. Where we should be on that. And we'll report back to you guys, because I think that is an extremely important thing for us to generate revenue and, um. And it's a goal for you guys to focus on as far as getting grants and putting toward infrastructure.
I don't mean to interrupt, did you tell them about that water plant fact you gave me the other day? That you mentioned that.
Which one?
Got it. Got it turning off?
Oh, the water plant, so when that eight-inch was leaking, the eight-inch line down on Watkins Street. The water plant ran non-stop for over a month straight. So that's electric, water production, chemicals, you name it. Actually, it was six weeks, I think, non-stop. And, uh, now it's shutting off around, uh, two in the morning and doesn't kick back on until ten in the morning. So the idea is to get that plant to shut down as much as possible, because it's when it's running, that's electric. Chemicals. And so forth, so. No, Watkins, the eight-inch. The big huge eight-inch that was busted on Watkins Street.
There's a bunch of big huge eight inches in this one, but the one we fixed it. Grosvenor and Popple wasn't there much, that was the last one we fixed, the stolen right, didn't.
Whatever. I'll bet you lunch. Call Bruce. Call Bruce. Anyway, so. That's all I got.
All right.
Okay, Dunphy, we're sure that you are correct, that we have no doubt that you're the one.
Jason's gonna text Bruce.
He is totally right.
I forgot about that one, that was the night it was raining when we were done.
Uh-huh, you guys fixed it.
So you owe us lunch.
Have you looked at him?
Two top and a wing. Hey, you're gonna prime the well, can't stop the pump.
All right, okay, so we're to the good the order, uh, Mr. Sherman?
Uh, I would just like to say that, that, you know. It's important to fill all these committees and, uh. We've got some great events coming up on the square, and we got our. Camper Zone Square, June eighteenth and nineteenth, so that's always a good, good event to have and. I believe there's one coming up April twenty-second, uh, Earth Day or something like that, too. So a lot of good things starting to happen in the spring.
Mr. Booth?
I don't have anything to say, thanks.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah, I have a quick question, um, the cone officer position, what is the starting hourly rate on that?
Uh, seventy, huh? Seventeen fifty? Let me go look.
It's Union.
Yeah, it's a Union gig, okay. Eighty-six, seventeen eighty-six, sounds about right. Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Taylor?
Uh, yes, so, um. I wanted to say thank you to, uh, the people that are filling our boards, we have been getting quite a few folks that are, um. Putting in, uh, requests that participate in some boards and committees, which is terrific. And I think that's, that's good, I hope people continue to get involved. Also wanted to ask the question, so we mentioned earlier in the meeting about lodging tax and it going, uh, potentially going after. Uh, those funds, uh, this one might be, uh, pressure for. Mr. Tory there, um, when we're doing that, is that like a small claims situation or is that, do we put a lien, do we put like against property tax?
The easiest way, well, when somebody doesn't pay their taxes, that's the easiest thing to do, put a lien against the property, okay? Uh, if somebody owes us directly, you can take those to small claims court, problem is a cost of seventy-five dollars to file. So it depends on what you think it's gonna be worth. And, you know, is it collectible, that's the issue. You can get a lien and a judgment, uh, sometimes that's not worth the favor it's written on. But something.
Okay, we've had the ability.
They have property, put a lien on it, that'd be great.
We've had, uh, the ability with some code violations to put, uh, against the property taxes and we've collected them that way. I know we don't get a hundred percent of those dollars because the, you know.
That's a, that's a smart way to go, you put it against the property.
Can we do that as well with the?
Once you get a judgment in small claims court, then you can ask that judgment be enforced by putting a lien on the property. You can do that.
And, uh, don't let me clean up your poop.
Ms. Jones?
Um, I don't have anything, but I did look up Greg and it looks like it's seventeen thirty-two, step one, thanks for that.
That's what I'd say, correct. Well done. Okay, um. I would just like to tell the city workers, thank you for all of your hard work, um. The town looks the best it's looked in a long time, especially after a hard winter. Streets look. Really, really good, uh, compared to years past and every year it seems to be a. Uh, more and more of an improvement every year, so I'd just like to thank all the guys for their hard work. Okay, um, with that, I'd like to go to executive session, O R C one twenty-one dash twenty-two for personnel and legal matters. Fighting in, city attorney and city manager, Mr. Scott Frank. And we'll be staying in here, so everybody else get out. Respect Mr. Clement's wearing of his mask, which he.
What's Mr. Troy say?
The time, the time is eight thirty-five.